Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the April 22 meeting of the Revere City Council. I want you all to rise first. We're going to have a moment of silence and then we'll salute the flag. We all want to remember the atrocities that happened on Patriots' Day last week. We want to remember all those that were killed and those that were injured. Remember them in our prayers and thank all those first responders who assisted. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Join me in saluting the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Arigo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Gino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Penta. Here, Counselor Powers. Here, Counselor Riordan is absent, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, Counselor President Novoselsky. Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting of April 2nd and April 8th, 2013.
All in favor, all opposed? Voting so ordered.
Calendar item number one, joint meeting of the utility companies.
Name and address for the record, gentlemen, please. Push the button on the mic, on the bottom. There you go.
Dan Cameron from National Grid with offices at 170 Metford Street in Malden.
Tim Kelly, Senior Manager of Government Affairs, having an office at 55 Concha Street, North Reg, Massachusetts, 01864.
Thank you. And I just want to let everybody know that Stan Jusovich is away on vacation, so he called me last week and said he will not be available for tonight. But we have our other two victims we can get. Comments from counselors. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's springtime, and Dan, you mentioned Conan Street once again.
Yep. The weather has turned for the better here, so we will be getting to all the paving that we promised before the winter. We have been working on double poles as well, with a push starting on our end by the end of March.
I know that Malden Street looks very good, and I was hoping you'd just take a left going up and go up to Conan Street, but that will be done.
That will be done.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Counselor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming before us this afternoon. Just one question. The Ward 6 area, Charger and Malden Street, there's two poles that are double pole, but one pole looks like it's in a hazardous situation. It's like leaning or something, and there's just one piece of wood or two-by-four holding it, so it looks kind of dangerous. I complained about it before. I know it was the wintertime. Do you have any kind of a schedule with that area?
Well, if it's, if it's, there's one pole on Charger Street here, if it's the one you're referring to, it's in Verizon's court right now.
Okay.
All right. So once they, we can check with Stan when he returns next week.
There might be some fire alarm signal wires on that pole that might have to be moved, so I don't know if that's holding that up.
Right. On Malden Street, there's three poles waiting for a fire alarm to transfer.
Okay. All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know, Dan, if you can convey this to Stan or not, get together, is it seems that once the double poles, which we're very thankful for their being removed, we're not really honoring the word of patching up where we leave off. And 22 Hutchinson Street, which is a very heavily trafficked street, many pedestrians walking that area, and over across from Two Martin Street, there's a big hole in the pole where the former site of the previous pole they took out is there, and it's about a half a foot deep. The neighbor over there across from Two Martin asked that that be corrected because he was walking his dog and, you know, he almost twisted his ankle pretty severely. And what I would suggest also is that, not for those two locations only, but it wouldn't be common courtesy, I think, once they take the pole down, we're thankful again that it's happening, but they repair the area where they leave it so that it's in a good working fashion and it's safe for pedestrians or whoever is in the area.
Agreed. That, just so I can pass this on to Stan, was it Two Martin?
Two Martin. M-A-R-T-I-N.
And what number Hutchinson, 20?
22.
22, okay. Because what, the pole's gone, they're not on the list, so we should capture that.
Martin Street, it's across from Two Martin. Thank you. And any other?
Yes.
Any other pole that's been taken down and that needs to be filled in and properly replaced? No, just filling it with dirt. We got to hot top, patch it up, make it nice and presentable. And where it was cement, you replace it with cement.
Right, whatever the?
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Arigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Riordan had asked me to bring up two poles in his ward since he's absent today. Pole number 3533. I don't know what, I'm not sure what street they're in.
Yeah, we need the street.
Okay. I'm just looking at his email right now, and he only has pole numbers in the email, but I can forward this in.
You want to follow that up?
Yeah, I'll follow up with you.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Counselor Powers. Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, I'm sure you recall, three or four months ago, we were down on Rice Avenue. Mr. McCushious residence down there, 143 Rice Ave. Can you tell me where that is right now, that situation? Because this gentleman has a pole in his backyard, and from what he's telling me, it's not supposed to be there. And then someone sent him a copy of an easement that was granted, I believe, in 1904, you know, over 100 years ago, and he'd like the pole out of there, to be perfectly honest with you. And I'm sure it's, it's an imposition on him to have that pole there. He wants to do something with his yard, and I don't think it would be too much of an imposition on either Verizon, National Grid, or maybe the two combined to get that pole out of there. Can you elaborate on that for me?
What I could tell you is it's in, out with our legal department because easements are handled by them. I do know that that pole, I believe, serves four houses, so we'd have to figure, if we did move that pole, we'd have to figure out a way to reserve those four houses that fed off of that pole. So that's all I can tell you right now. If there is an easement on record, we do have the right to be there.
No, I know, there's an easement on record. It goes back to, I think, suburban gas and electric. That's how old it is. And certainly, I don't think when he purchased that property, he was under the impression the easement for was 169 Rice Avenue. So what, I guess what I'm asking is if maybe we could bend a little backwards to help this gentleman out, to get that pole out of his yard so he can utilize his property in a manner in which he'd like to. Is that something?
Yeah, I mean, we'd be glad to meet down there again to see if we can come up with a, but?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's some way, you know, I mean, some way a pole can be relocated somewhere. Can you get back to me on that at some point and set up an appointment?
I will.
I'm going to be on vacation for two weeks, but when I come back, I'd appreciate it if we could get together. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Patch.
Dan, I just got to mention again, the hot topping on Sergeant Street, I've mentioned it before.
Yes. It's on, I know we're picking them off as.
It wasn't, unfortunately, it wasn't your work, as it was a subcontractor that did that work, and they don't do the quality of work that the National Grid workers do. Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since I used to be the biggest complainer of double poles, and now I have a little fun thanking these gentlemen that we're finally working in harmony to actually remove double poles and cooperate, and I think this once-a-month meeting has been terrific, and all I'm going to say is, the spring is here. I know you're going to do a lot more work. Just keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, counselors. Just a few, just to go over a couple that I had. I think I had four. Blake Street shows it's an electric issue at this point.
Yes, that's ours.
It's not a main line, so I guess the pole had, I had cop in the rants in it, and they changed it, and this was like two years ago.
Okay, so we'll move that one.
So we're going to put a push on that one, and the street light has to move on that also.
Okay.
1526 North Shore Road, the pole's been there for four years and nothing's been done with it.
Okay.
And I don't know who owns pole 48 on the Revere Beach Parkway. I don't see any fall in court there, so I don't know. There's a double pole there, but nothing's connected to it.
Is it, it's clear to hear everyone's off of it. Do you know if anyone's off, everyone's off of it?
Everybody's off it.
Okay. Some reason it's in our court. I'll have to check on that. Okay.
Cool. And then you have to check that one on Beach Street at Duncan Donut.
Beach Street, yeah. I got that in the room.
Other than that, that's all I have. I thank you. I'm glad we have a good rapport and talking relationship that we meet every month. You've had a month and a half off this time, so.
Appreciate that.
But we'll see you next month. I'm sure we'll have a better update and more updates, and we have, get things rolling.
Move along.
We're all doing a good job. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Calendar item number two, certificates of commendation will be awarded to the Commission on Disability for their continuous hard work and dedication in advocating for the rights and interests of disabled residents and their families.
Does anybody that cannot come up here, we'd like you to come up, whoever's here from the disability, to accept your citations. Well, if they want. Yeah, come around here. Hey, ladies and gentlemen, you have before you folks that work in City Hall and don't get paid. These are our volunteers, and a little nepotism here, my aunt is one of them. But I do want to thank them on behalf of the City Council and the City of Revere, and, you know, I know the mayor really appreciates all the time you put in downstairs. Normally Cindy Tadelman will be here, who is the director, who doesn't get paid, and she's the director, and she loves this department. And I know a lot of folks love this department because they do a lot for us, not only helping people getting signs in front of their houses for handicap, helping people get wheelchairs, canes, walkers. There's a lot that they do, and they love their job. And on behalf of myself again, and the city counselors, and the mayor, I want to thank you and congratulate you for your hard work and your dedication. So with that, thank you very much. So with that, all these citations read the same, and I will just read the names once we get this moving along. "The certificate of commendation and grateful appreciation of your hard work and countless hours of time and dedication in advocating for the rights and the interests of disabled residents and their families as a member of the Commission on Disabilities. Special recognition is hereby accorded to, in this case, Lucy Cavallo. This certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts. On behalf of its citizens, this 22nd day of April in the year of our Lord 2013, in the Independence of the United States of America, the 263rd, and it's signed by Ashley Melnick, City Clerk, and myself, and City Council President, Ira Novoselsky." So thank you. And this one goes to Rena Schalickman, again, my aunt. And Paul Mazone, Neil Park. Rose Lepore, I think she's not here. Right. Olivia Feranti, my friend, and here you go. Good job. Harvey Corrigan. And this one is for Cindy Tadelman, and of course, she's not here. She is in the hospital, and she's been here for a little while, so I'm not sure what the latest, the status is.
Want me to take it to her?
Please do. So this will be for Cindy, so we thank her for that and all her work. But thanks, guys. Come out this way, so I'll meet the other counselors.
Well, this way, that's a little different.
Oh, who's the one in picture? Where am I? Harvey. We got a photo up. Photo up. I do have to mention, this was almost forced onto me by our Silver Senator, Judy Robichaud, who always said that there were certain people in this world that never got recognized, and these were some of them. So we thank them again, and we thank her for the recognition and notification of that, so. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this time I'm going to ask for a suspension of rules to jump around on the public hearings and some of the other issues. All in favor, all opposed? Voting so ordered. Item number three first.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered upon the proposed loan order at the amount of $2.5 million for the replacement of various water lines, valves, and hydrants through the MWRA Local Pipeline Assistance Program.
Proponents, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council. If you would, I'd just like to, before I talk about this loan order, I just want to mention a couple of things. First off, as you did, Mr. President, recognizing last week's events prior to the meeting, I just wanted to let you all know, which I'm sure you all do, what a significant role that our police department played in the ongoings of last week's, obviously horrific attack and subsequent arrest of the second suspect. First off, starting on Marathon Day, as you may know, a couple of our officers ran in the marathon, Sergeant Mason and Officer Covino, and they were within about 30 or 40 yards of the finish line when the bombing actually took place. And at that point, Officer Covino and Sergeant Mason went into action, putting tourniquets on people, triaging, doing whatever they needed to do to get people to a safe place and, in many cases, into an ambulance. In the case of Sergeant Mason, he actually went home after running a marathon and helping people out there at the scene, went home, and as you know, he's our canine officer, grabbed his canine, went back to the scene, and spent all night assisting in the search of any additional explosive devices that may have been at the scene. So really outstanding work on their behalf. And then on Friday, when they had, I guess it started, it began Thursday night, they called in the Metro North SWAT team, which we have several members of our department that are a part of that team, and they did a tremendous job. They were out there for, I believe, close to 23 hours, 24 hours, and it was our guys, actually, that were on the boat taking that second suspect into custody. So I just want to say here publicly and to you, honorable members of the council, that we should all be very, very proud of the good work that's been done by our officers here in the Revere Police Department. They made us all proud, and they just did terrific, terrific work. With respect to this loan order, I came here a couple weeks ago requesting a public hearing, which is what we're doing now. This is the interest-free loan that is offered up by the MWRA. It's going to, obviously, a lot, it's, there's several streets virtually in every single ward throughout the city that will be impacted by this money. It's obviously, we don't, if we didn't have to spend it, we wouldn't be spending it, but unfortunately, this is work that has to be done. It is going to benefit our residents at, you know, when all the work is completed. As I say, it's an interest-free loan that we need to take advantage of. The situation is that I would ask if the council would be able to accommodate a vote this evening, because this loan offer, although our application has long been in, we need a vote of the city council in order to ratify that so that we can take advantage of the loan. This first phase is going to sunset in, I believe, sometime the beginning of May or mid-May. You know, I believe Frank will be able to tell you exactly, but we don't want to take any chances. We'd appreciate it if the council could take this up for a vote this evening, which will allow us to start, you know, the work that needs to be done in order to make these necessary repairs. So I'm asking you, if you could, to please consider taking a favorable vote this evening. Thank you very much.
So noted. Are there any other proponents? Name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Frank Strangery, Planning Director for City of Revere. As the mayor stated, this Phase 1 of the MWRA Pipeline Assistance Program is going to expire on May 15. That'll be the last date for disbursement of funds, and if we go any further than that, we'll come under the Phase 2 program, and our allotment will only be 1.5 million. So to gain the entire allotment from Phase 2, it's necessary to get our application, which has already been submitted, ratified by a vote of the city council. The program, as you all know, is very important because it affects a lot of neighborhoods in the city. A lot of the older pipelines, not only from a water quality standpoint, from a fire safety standpoint, to improve pressure for fire safety. Shirley Avenue neighborhood, Beachmont neighborhood, West Revere, the reservoir area, Lower Revere Street and Upper Revere Street will all be affected. One of the most important projects in this category is the water line under Beach Street, under the bridge, under Bell Circle. That's cutting off essentially the whole Shirley Avenue area because it's been shut down. That's about 400 feet of 12-inch that we have to replace. On Camille Road is over 1,000 feet of 8-inch. On Joey Road, 890 feet of 8-inch line. On Centennial Ave, between Florence and Woods Ave, about 250 feet of 10-inch line. Florence Ave, 900 feet of 12-inch line. Naples Road, over 1,300 feet of 8-inch line. North Shore Road, between Revere Street and Shama Street, is 1,350 feet of 12-inch line. And on Crest Ave in Beachmont, from Seal Street to Washington Square, it's the largest stretch. It's over 1,500 feet of 8-inch line. So these are lines, obviously, that are older, that have been a problem for the DPW, have been breaking and had to be shut down. Another important aspect of it, this program is going to be hydrant replacement on all these streets and putting new valves in in Beachmont area, because right now, there's only a couple of valves. Water shuts down in Beachmont, you have to shut down the whole area because of only a couple of valves. So we're going to try to isolate sections of Beachmont, so if you have a break, the whole area is not affected. Also, an important aspect of the program is the reservoir, putting new variable speed pumps in the reservoir, which will impact the entire water system. So needless to say, it's a very important program, and we'd like to get started on construction this summer, so a vote of the city council tonight would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Are there any other proponents? Name and address for the record.
Don Guin, 6 Lloyd Road, North Reading, Massachusetts, Superintendent of Public Works. Without being redundant, I just want to elaborate on a couple of things Frank had to say about the various projects that are going to go on. That, which coincides with a lot of the projects that the state is undertaking, doing bridges and whatnot around the community. The bridge at Winthrop Avenue is scheduled to be refurbished, taken down. We have a water line that crosses that bridge that supplies fire protection, water quality, and pressure to the Beachmont section. Now, if you combine that, what's going on at Shirley Ave right now, we'll have inadequate supply to the Beachmont area if we don't rectify that problem before that bridge comes in. So that is paramount. That needs to be done. The reservoir is another issue. All the various issues that you are dealing with, Beachmont, we can't shut it down. We're shutting the whole neighborhood down to do small water breaks up there, and it is a very, is a big valve issue problem up there. We have some asbestos pipe that needs to be removed throughout the community, so these are the things that we're moving forward on. So at this time, I would appreciate if you could move forward. If you have any questions, I'll be here for you later. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Are there any other proponents? I'd like to read into the record a letter that, I'm not going to read the whole letter, but a letter of support from the city engineer, Nick Reistrom, saying that he is, he apologized for not being here tonight, but is in favor of this to pass within the city council, so. With that, are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents, hearing is seeing none, I will close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, I will close that side of the council. Counselor Guanasso.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Roll call.
The city council approves a $2.5 million bond order for design and construction of water system improvements through the MWRA Local Pipeline Assistance Program. Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Corregio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riordan is absent. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes. The bond order has been approved.
Motion to suspend rules.
They're already suspended. Motion to file reconsideration.
File reconsideration, but does not prevail.
Counselor Guanasso, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Take up item number three. After five, I'm sorry. Item number five, 13-04.
Hearing called is ordered on the application of CBW Lending LLC, 745 Fifth Ave, 18th Floor, New York, New York, seeking permission of the Revere City Council to operate a commercial automotive storage parking facility at 190 VFW Parkway.
Mr. President, good evening, honorable members. James Cipolletta, 385 Broadway, Revere. On behalf of the petition of CBW lending, Mr. President, this matter comes before the council on a recommendation of the Site Plan Review Committee after the CBW lending, which is the successor in interest to Wonderland Greyhound Park, had applied to renew the parking lot license at Wonderland. It was then pointed out by the planning, city planner, to the License Commission that before doing so... before doing so, given the change in ownership and the opening of the MBTA lot, that we would need to come and get the zoning reaffirmed and get a special permit to allow the parking lot to be used, it's no surprise, as a parking lot. So, we promised the License Commission that we would come to the city council, apply for the special permit and reapply if we are successful in the special permit back to the Revere License Commission so as to take up that activity again under a license, which had initially been modified to the extent that the commuter parking had been promised to be terminated when the MBTA parking lot went up. However, the long-term parking, which is, which takes place closer to the facility at Wonderland, is sought to be continued. I've appeared before the council over the last 10 or 12 years on a number of occasions for Wonderland and remembering that it was always in connection with some tax issues and making arrangements for the payment of back taxes. I'm happy to report that CBW lending, since taking ownership of Wonderland, has been paying the full tax, on time, without abatement, even though there is no established use there. This ongoing activity, if it is allowed, to continue, would help the new owner to raise a little revenue to be able to continue to pay the taxes. It is anticipated that about 400 spaces would be used for long-term parking, some of which is overflow parking from some of the local businesses which operate rental cars, rental car facilities. I would suggest, and I know this is going to the zoning and public safety subcommittee, that given the fact that this area that's designated under the special permit application is a parking lot, that the best use of a parking lot for the new owner is, at least for the time being, as a parking lot. That having been said, however, there are development plans that would be contemplated to, would change that down the road. But as we know, everything surrounding the development of new uses in the city of Revere has taken a bit of time. So, knowing that this is not going to be a permanent situation, we would ask that the special permit issued, we be allowed to go back to the License Commission, reapply and get licensed until such time as a definitive development plan is established. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. And are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none. I'll close that portion of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Want to step up to the mic and give me name and address, sir, please?
Joseph Alredo Jr. I live at 34 Chama Street. I bought this parking lot and for years, this parking lot has not kept up. There's a stream conservation land in my backyard that looks like a dump. Nobody cleans it. Nobody cuts the grass there. The fence has fallen over. Nobody maintains it. I mean, I couldn't even find out who owned it till I got a letter in the mail. Now, I want to know who's going to clean all this stuff up, if they're going to have, oh, and the rental car place. 10, 11 o'clock at night. They have all kinds of cars in there. The only way to find a car, they need to press the alarm button and have the car go beep, 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 beep. I mean, I get video of this. I have pictures of it. I have pictures of all the debris in there. It's crazy. These guys need to clean it up and have these people have a better way of finding their cars. It's ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Are there any other opponents? Are there any other opponents? Hearing is seeing none. I'll close that portion of the hearing. I would, before I open up the council, I'd just like to remind everybody once again that we will be sending this to the zoning subcommittee. And I would hope that we keep this at a minimum of discussion without any questions to the proponents, you know, to the applicants. I'm sure that when we get to the zoning subcommittee that the council will address, Counselor Cipolletta will address your issues, sir. You'll be notified. We'll make sure you're notified when we have that zoning subcommittee meeting. Okay? Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you know, this was the motion, the result of the motion that I put in a couple of months ago. For the past, almost for the better part of a year, they've been parking cars down there with no license or no permit, as is required. They went before the licensing board, as the attorney stated, and they were told that they needed a special permit. Now, I understand they pay their taxes and the people I represent pay their taxes too and they pay them timely and they're not going before the appellate tax board. Originally, there was, I think it was a $25 per car charge for 800 cars down there. I went by there today and I would venture to say there's considerably more than 400 cars, number one. Number two, they have probably 14 trailer trucks down there. And number three, the gentleman's 100% right. That property is not being kept up the way it should be. Those cars have but residents there. If this special permit is granted, and I hope there will be a dollar amount attached to it, or it will go back to the licensing board and they will specify a dollar amount and it will be done quickly because we need the relief dollar-wise in this city and we need that parking lot cleaned up. They also own seven other properties on Chama Street, which have but the parking lot, and they also need to be cleaned up. They want to be good neighbors. The residents down there want to be good neighbors, but I think it works both ways. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. With that, I'm going to refer that to zoning subcommittee. This hearing is now closed. Calendar item number 10, please.
Calendar item number 10. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Van Wagner Communications LLC, 803rd Avenue, 28th Floor, New York, New York, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify a non-conforming use, which is an existing billboard on Lot 1 at 40 Lee Burbank Highway, Revere, Mass.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. President. Through to the members of the council. For the record, Richard Lins, 1216 Bennington Street East, Boston. I'm here this evening on behalf of Van Wagner Communications. In addition to the petition that's for 40 Lee Burbank Highway, there's a companion case as well at 1141 Revere Beach Parkway. Very briefly, Mr. President, this is a petition to modify two existing outdoor advertising devices, which have existed approximately for about 10 years in the city of Revere. The proposal is to take the existing devices and to modify them to include digital media. As this council may be aware, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, through the Department of Transportation, has recently modified its regulations to permit digital advertising on outdoor advertising devices, which are properly permitted and licensed. In order to do that, however, we require local approval first. Because these structures that are presently existing are considered non-conforming structures, the only way to modify those appropriately would be through special permit under the zoning ordinance, Section 17, I believe it's .40, .030. I would submit to the council that the proposed modifications would not be substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood as a result of these modifications. In fact, they would improve with the technology. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any other proponents to this application? Mr. Mayor. Name and address for the record, sir.
Are you serious?
No.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is, as you know, you've probably seen a lot of these digital billboards that are starting to crop up now. And it's really, it's really advantageous for the owners of these billboards because they don't have to leave up that one billboard for 30, 60, 90 days at a time. They can have a rotating message with many different advertisers. As a result, the city is able to enter into mitigation with respect to these billboards. And in the case of this particular billboard, the proponent, the applicant, has proposed a $40,000 annual payment to the city of Revere, as well as a $5,000 annual payment to the Sand Sculpting Festival, which is a total of a $45,000 contribution on an annual basis to the city. So, I would, I would like to ask for your support and stand here as a proponent because the thing you have to be clear about here is they're not asking to put up any more billboards. These billboards are existing. All they want to do is take advantage of the new technology. So, whether or not you're for billboards, against billboards, it's, in this particular case, it's irrelevant. It's just basically allowing them to take advantage of the new digital format that they can enter into now. So, I hope that after, I know you have to go to the zoning subcommittee with this, but I hope you'll take that into consideration over a period of time, whatever the, however long they keep up these digital boards, it's going to mean, you know, significant money to the city in addition to any tax revenue that would be derived from it otherwise. So, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none. I'll close that portion of the hearing. Are there any opponents to this application?
My name is Ron Champeau.
I was going to ask for name and address, but I'm not going to ask, are you here all as one organization?
Yes.
So, I'd like to have one person do speaking for the organization.
And we will.
Thank you.
We will do that. My name is Ron Champeau. I live at Stevens Street in Revere. I am a member of the Revere Beautification Committee and we have several members of the Revere Beautification Committee here. I speak to oppose, the group speaks to oppose this granting of the permit. I can hear what the mayor says. I'll address those issues after a moment. But right now, I do not see, the committee does not see, how this enhances the city of Revere in any way. Does not enhance the city, money-wise it does, as the mayor stated here today. We weren't fully aware of that. But the issue of the image of the city of Revere, it does nothing for our city. There's revitalization going on all over the city. Linden Square, Twire Road, Revere Beach, Broadway. The city is turning a corner. The city is turning a corner. We said this before and it's the truth. I don't see how this is going to enhance us and make us a better place to live. We don't need to talk about an increase in billboards. Last year, we had the conversation, there was 84 billboards. There are 84 billboards in the city of Revere. 84, gentlemen and ladies. 84, more than any other city that I know of in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Last year, overwhelmingly, this committee wisely voted against another billboard, which I understand there's an appeal on, a potential for another billboard down at Copeland Circle. Now, could that be eventually another electronic billboard? The Van Wagner Communications Company of New York is proposing two, two electronic billboards in Revere. I think we have to be realistic, knowing how the courts work. How do we stop the next one? It was like years ago, somebody wanted one billboard in this city. Then there were 10. Then there were 20. Then there were 30. Then there were 40. Then there were 60. Now, we have two, a request for two electronic billboards in this city. How are we going to stop the third, the fourth, the fifth? How are we going to stop them? Are we going to vote and then have it appealed again? I say we stop them now. I say we stop them now. We make a decision. We stand up. This is a significant event in the city. I see it as a sentinel event of where we're going to be. I do not see this as helpful. I mean, our thoughts are that the city solicitor should be involved in this. We need to know the potential. Is it two billboards? Is it two? Or is it five? Or is it 10? Or is it more? Can we stop the third, the fourth, the fifth? I don't know if we can. I think we need advice. We need counsel. The committee, the subcommittee, I don't know which subcommittee, zoning, whatever it is, needs to really research this. We need to look at the potential for even more billboards coming in the city and what it does to the city. Do we want to be Reno? Do we want to be Las Vegas? I don't think we want to be that. We've got the potential for a casino coming in here and opening up the city and doing some good. So, I ask the subcommittee, when they look into it, seek counsel, have the city solicitor look into this, ask his advice. And I also think we have to look down the road. We have to look down the road. Look at what was stated years ago. We're paying for the sins of our fathers. That's the way I look at it. We've got 84 billboards. Do we want multiple, multiple, multiple 10-second advertisements in front of our homes, on our highways? I don't know if we do. We're not like Medford. They don't have the kind of, the amount of signs that we have. They've got three or two or three on the highway. We've got, there's the opportunity. I came over the highway today, over the bridge, and as I hit the one coming down just off the Tolden Bridge, turn left going up the high, going up towards Copeland Circle, there was five potential billboards. I read the law. There was five potential billboards, billboards that could be potentially become electronic billboards. I don't think we want that. That's just in that one area. I think this deserves study. This is a significant event, believe me, in this city. Where are we going to go? And that's what we're saying. That's what we're asking you to do. We're asking you to look down the road for us and for our children in this city. Very, very important. I thank you for your attention and I look forward to speaking at the committee.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to, you want to list the people's names on the record that are here behind you, other than the organ, just without saying anything, just see if you name and address for the record, please? Push the button, push the button again. There you go.
Dr. BB Wondelak, 35 Pines Road, Revere.
Thank you.
Annette Bornstein, 350 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Thank you.
Sylvia Corrin, Macobus Street, Revere.
Thank you.
Eleanor Vera, 27 Ford Street, Revere.
Thank you.
Steve Morabito, 84 Florence Ave.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other opponents? Any other opponents? Any other opponents? Hearing is seeing none. I'll close that portion of the hearing. Again, councils, we will be sending this to committee. So, if you can, if you want to speak, please make one minute because you're going to be saying your piece again.
I'll be as brief as possible, Mr. President. As you know, I have consistently, on several occasions, voted against billboards in this city. I had a call last week about locating a billboard at Bell Circle, enlarging a billboard that's already there. And believe me, nothing could be further from my agenda than doing that. However, you know, the mayor gets up here and he's talking about $40,000 a year in money coming into the city. And I heard comments by some of my constituents, I believe there's three of them right there, and what, five? And I heard their comment that, you know, we're turning a corner, okay? Well, we are turning a corner, but I went down North Shore Road today and I looked at all the litter down there, you know, on the marsh area and along the guardrail, and we haven't turned that corner yet. And that leads me to believe that perhaps, you know, we should look at this and look at it closely because money is important to this city. If we're going to clean up the city, no one's going to go out and do it for nothing. We have to pay people to do it. That's number one. Number two, I think we need to get an opinion from the city solicitors. Are we opening a door here? Okay? And I think that the committee should get that opinion. And the third question I have is, the $40,000 a year, does that diminish the money we're already getting for commercial taxes on the existing billboards that are there? These are all important questions and, Mr. President, this is going to committee and I respect that and I will say my piece at that committee meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be real brief. I want to thank my friends from the Beautification Committee for their service. They provide a great service. We disagree on this one. These are existing billboards. Now, I know that we mentioned billboards up here. The emotions turn into, you know, it's a nightmare anytime we mention billboards. It's not like we're talking about putting new billboards up here. And I dare say that the advertising board would not sanction more than two billboards in the city electronically. So, I think there's, you know, there may be fear... I'm not sure. And maybe we'll talk about that later. But the bottom line is, we're not putting up new billboards. We're modifying two billboards, the way I see it. And I think it is substantial revenue stream for the city every year. And I, you know, I dare say some of that money will help the Beautification Committee or entities like the Beautification Committee. So if I had a vote on this tonight, I'd probably be for it, but there's a lot more I want to learn before. And some of the things, some of the good suggestions about the solicitor and what, just what limits will be put on this. But I think there are some severe limits from a state statute point of view. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Guanasso?
Mr. President, the Beautification Committee chair expressed himself very well in, but I'm looking at it in terms of what the right thing to do is, or what the right thing to not do. The Beautification Committee came up in support for the signage on these barrels throughout the community, to which they had no objection. In fact, they were in favor of it because there was going to be revenue set aside for beautification. This particular proposal is digital in nature. I don't see anything offensive by it. I don't really see any glaring things that are going to happen from this. This is not like we're suggesting that a new sign be put in place. Nobody in this council or no one in this city is going to do that. We fought tooth and nail to fight against these billboards from coming into our community. But these are existing billboards, and these two particular sites, the one in Lee Burbank Highway, for God's sakes, is almost in East Boston. So that's not going to ruin the aesthetics of Revere. And in fact, in the near-to-future, in the very near future, there's going to be some glittering signs up there for a casino right across the street. And at 1141 Maria Beach Parkway, that is really, again, it's in a highway potential. And again, these message boards could be used in case of a disaster to our advantage. They could be life-saving in some particular cases, with the messages that they could instantly put on that message board. These are not going to be glaring signs with fluorescent lights gleaming down and sending out these shadows of reflection throughout the community. These are going to be in good taste. I reviewed their proposal, and I saw what the type of presentation it will make. And in terms of whether this would in fact create more billboards to do the same thing, if they're in good taste, why not? I mean, but right now, there isn't anything pretty about a billboard. In fact, I think this might beautify a billboard somewhat. There's nothing nice-looking about a billboard, and no one in their right mind would suggest that there is. But now, we're given a challenge that, or a request was made before this council, what do you do with the existing board? And the existing board, in my opinion, is going to be improved. And so I will shorten my message to you, Mr. President, but I just wanted to say that based on this public hearing to add my comments. But I will say more at the zoning subcommittee, rest assured.
Thank you. Councillor Patch, Councillor Penther, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I'm probably going to repeat myself here, but one of these billboards is in my ward. Councillor Guanasso said it's actually almost in East Boston, if you took a couple more feet. But you're going to take every one of these billboards. People have billboards, and they panic, and I know we got a lot of phone calls, but everyone should be taking on his own merits, especially the one in Lee Burbank Highway. I mean, like I said, it's in East Boston, you're in International Airport, and that's where they advertise. But the thing is, the mayor said it, basically, we're not adding a billboard. We're cleaning a billboard up, is the way I look at it. This is the time and place to put things in perspective with the billboards. You're getting a brand-new billboard where a billboard is, and it's going to exist if we vote this down. It's only going to be that much aesthetic to the area. Second, Councillor Guanasso said it, we could put on here so many hours a year that the city guaranteed time to put stuff on here. There's things you can get a lot of bonuses out of this for a billboard that is going to be there regardless of how we vote, probably an uglier billboard. So I think everyone's going to be taking on his merits. There's money out there, we need police officers, maybe one of these can pay, you know, and if a couple more came in and they're in the right area, I'd vote for them. So I'm not afraid of three, four, five. But we have to say up here, if it's in a bad area, we voted the last billboard that came in 11 to nothing against it. So I mean, I think, you know, level heads would do the right things in here in the right areas. So I mean, with that being said, you've got to take these things on its face value, where they are, where they're located. I mean, we happen to be a gateway to Boston. Why would they want to put a billboard up to it? Because they can make money off it. I mean, just call it the way it is. You're not going to put one on the side street like they did years ago. We have one in Revere on the side street, and I agree with you. 84 is a lot. Maybe some of those should never have been voted on. But with that being said, it's going to committee, I'll keep my other comments to myself.
Thank you. Councillor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the Beautification Committee for coming forward, the wonderful work you do. I've always gone, I've always agreed with you, but I don't, I don't agree this time because I don't like billboards. I voted again, I don't think I've ever voted for a billboard in six years. But the thing is, I agree with my fellow councillors who spoke that this is a test. We okay this, these two aren't in my ward, and I can sit on my deck and I can see two billboards. So this is, for me, this is a test to see how, I think they're going to actually increase the beautification of the billboard. Also, we're going to get money for it, and if it, you also can use it for the amber alert, which, you know, would be quite useful. And I just think, this deal was put together by the city solicitor, so I don't think we're doing anything illegal here. I just think that, for me, you know, ward six councillor, who has a few billboards, that it's going to be a test to see how, how they come out and how people take to them. So basically, I'm in favor of voting for this billboard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Hearing the other councillors, I'll put my two cents in. You know, I appreciate what, you know, Ron said and what the committee feels, but, you know, we realize that this billboard's still going to be there, whether they put this electronic guts into it or not. It's going to be there as a paper billboard, still going to have those shining lights coming down from the bottom, which do reflect into some of the homes that may, to some of the homes right now. So I think there'll be less direct lighting, and it'll be pushing out to the public rather than into the neighborhood. Ron mentioned an appeal, there's an appeal still open for that other billboard. You know, we cannot stop these things, because 99% of the time, people take it to court and the courts overrule us. We don't have a good road record with the courts. We still have, they still have to abide by state rules, and even though they opened up these electronic billboards, the digital billboards for use, there's still a 500-foot limit, a limit between billboards. Before, they were only 300 feet, so they can't put them up right next to each other. I think with these digital billboards, the value of the billboard will increase, so we'll get, be getting more taxes from it, based on property taxes that we get now. And I know that, you know, Van Wagner has offered, you know, funds to operate the city, they're donating to sandcastles, that's what their offer is, and they've also offered to use the billboards on emergencies. If we have a snow emergency, they can flash right onto it. There's an emergency ban in Revere, you know, no parking on the main streets. They've offered to advertise events such as the sandcastles, such as parks and recreation things going on. So, you know, I can appreciate, you know, the Beautification Committee's position, but you know, when the time comes, you know, I believe right now I would be voting for this. So with that, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, if I could just add just a couple of things. First off, I did not realize that the Beautification Committee was here in opposition to this, but, okay, it must have slipped by me, but nonetheless, obviously, we always respect everybody's opinions in this. I mean, this just happens to be the opinion that I share with some of you that I've heard speak here. The one thing that I did want to just address in case I can't make the subcommittee, although you'll find this information on anyway, this payment, what these mitigation payments are in addition to property taxes. This is a special side arrangement like any other mitigation that we would accept here in the city. Secondly, one of the things that I left out, and a couple of you have, I believe, Councillor Guanasso mentioned, Councillor Patch, and Councillor Novoselsky, Councillor President Novoselsky just mentioned, they will be, we will be able to use these in an emergency, obviously. I saw them used firsthand. There's a digital board up on Route 93 where they had the picture of the second bombing suspect up there, and they can get that up there instantaneously. But in addition to emergencies or amber alerts or anything like that, that, you know, we may have to experience here, they're also going to give the city five hours a month for public service announcements. So the various things that we do here throughout the city, you know, organizations, whatever that the city wants to get behind, they are going to offer up to the city five hours a month. So that in and of itself, I mean, if you had to pay for that advertising, you know, I'm sure it would be quite expensive. So when you take all of that into consideration, I think really, for adding no additional poles, you know, just letting them take advantage of this new technology, I think, I think in the big picture, it's a positive thing. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, this will be going to zoning subcommittee, and we will now close this part of this hearing. Now, we're going to do number 11, and it's just a duplicate of the last one, so I would ask that if there, if councillor wants to get up and just give a brief, you know, same thing, we'll just put the same names on as opponents and proponents, so we can move right into subcommittee after that. Okay, councillor, you okay with that? Okay. Come on, yep.
Calendar item number 11, hearing called is ordered on the application of Van Wagner Communications LLC, New York, New York, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify non-conforming use in existing billboard on lots 1 and 4 at 1141 Revere Beach Parkway.
Name and address for the record again, just.
Good evening, Mr. President. Richard Lins, 1216 Bennington Street, East Boston, on behalf of Van Wagner Communications. As indicated, this is the exact same petition just for 1141 Revere Beach Parkway. One thing, I apologize, Mr. President, I would correct the mayor on, was that the amount of hours is 15 hours per board, not just five hours. So there's actually a lot more hours per month, correct?
So again, unless councillor, well, we're still in the middle of a public hearing, so let me get it through the opponents again. Again, unless there's any other proponents that we spoke before, we will repeat the names for proponents. Proponents, sir?
Yes, George Rotundo, 45 Howman Street. I think this is a good utilization for the property, but more importantly, to allow for public service announcements, and I think it's a great contribution, and I think it'll help out immensely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So are there any other proponents other than that we spoke before? We will put everybody else's name on the same proponent list, including Mr. Rotundo's. Hearing and seeing none, more, close that portion of the hearing. Opponents, are there any additional opponents other than the Revere Beautification Committee? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Councillor Riggo, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a quick question about the 15 hours. Is that in addition to the 15 hours that you have to give per state regulation, or is that the 15 hours that are part of, part of the regs? 15? No, they said 15.
Through the president, yeah, it's 15 hours as required by the CMR.
This will go into zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered upon the request of Robert T. Mahoney to Paul Street, Revere, Mass., to convey two lots of land owned by Row Contracting, lots 229 Austin Street and lot 232 Austin Street, containing 2,2783 square feet, for a total of 5,566 square feet in the total lots on Austin Street, to the city of Revere in exchange for lot, for a lot owned by the city of Revere, Lot 7, Grandview Ave., containing 5,250 square feet.
Mr. Applicant, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Robert Mahoney, 2 Paul Street, Revere, Mass., 02151. Good evening, councillor president, members of the councillors, and Madam Clerk. My name is Robert Mahoney, and I'm here on behalf of Row Contracting and are seeking the interest of the city of Revere and entering into a land swap agreement with Row Contracting. And I have also submitted a letter from the city of Revere Conservation Committee unanimously supporting this land swap consisting of the Revere receiving lots 229, 232 on Austin Streets, which, again, the madam mentioned, 2,783 square feet each totaling 5,566 square feet from Row Contracting in exchange from the city of Revere conveying map 34 block 468C on Grandview Ave., containing 5,250 square feet to Row Contracting.
That'll be it. Yes, thank you. Are there any other proponents to this transfer? Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Are there any opponents to this? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. I do want to put on the record that the Conservation Commission has submitted a letter recommending that this be approved, this land swap. Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob, what are we trying to do here? There are two lots on Austin Street which are abutting the conservation land, two and a half acres of conservation land, and Row Contracting is looking to convey that land to the Conservation Committee and in return, receiving a parcel of land to add to a piece that they have on Grandview Ave. So basically, it's going to add to the current conservation land, two parcels to it? That is correct. No, that was the land, it was legally filled way back when? The land, it's part of the conservation land, yes. But it's outside, it's outside that. It's outside that. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Councillor Patch?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. This is, this is in my ward. I just want to say that I have gotten no negative response to this land swap, and I am in favor of it. Ms. Maloney does, if anybody takes a ride up the, where Wally Ward's old Hus Farm was up there, Riding Academy, you see some beautiful houses that he's built. So I think it's just a plus for my ward, and I'll be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. We'll be referring this to Ways and Means.
Ways and Means, zoning?
No, Ways and Means, it's a land swap, so there's money involved. So it's still going to the subcommittee anyway, so.
Yeah, it's a legkind exchange.
Yeah.
Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on the application of Louis Rubino, Rubino Family Realty Trust, 1 Sprague Street, Revere, Mass., seeking permission from the Revere City Council to convert an existing mixed-use residential retail non-conforming structure to a mixed residential restaurant use to enable the appellant to operate a bistro-style pizzeria with takeout at 744 Broadway.
Proponents, applicants?
Mr. President, members of the council, Joseph Cotojio, 1 Sprague Street, Revere, representing Rubino Family Trust. The applicants tonight were seeking to convert 744 Broadway, which is the old Revere Aluminum mixed-use building, into a mixed-use residential restaurant. which is the old Riviera Aluminum mixed-use building, into a mixed-use residential restaurant use. There are plans that were submitted with the application that give you a good idea of the design. Respect to your calendar tonight, I'll be brief, knowing that this will be going to subcommittee. We look forward to working with the subcommittee. The restaurant proposed itself has a, we would suggest a minimal impact on the, on the neighborhood, the immediate neighborhood. We would expect more foot traffic than car traffic. We plan on a facelift of the building, which will be in line with the mayor's guidelines on a beautification and revitalization of Broadway, right down to the exterior lighting designs. We've been favorably before site plan review. We've recommended we come here. We look forward to working with the Building Department, the Board of Health, the Fire Department, and most certainly with the zoning subcommittee. We're here for any questions, and my clients are here as well.
Are there any other proponents? Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Counselor Gonasso?
Thank you, Mr. President. I reviewed the proposal quite thoroughly, and I have no objection whatsoever. I think it's going to be a fine addition to that location. I think that there's a need for that particular service, and I hear that the individual does quality work, and it's something we all look forward to. So the proof will be in the tasting in this particular case, so I look forward to speaking on this further as we go on to subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Zoning Subcommittee, and I do want to apply the site plan review report to it. I'm glad, I'm glad they brought up handicap accessibility because that would have been one of my issues. So we will apply that communication to the application. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just be a minute. That building there, it's kind of been an eyesore for many, many years, and that sign will be coming down, that big, it says Riviera Aluminum.
Yes.
That'll be all coming down.
Yes, no need to advertise.
Landscaping and redesign of the building, the look of the building.
Yes, we'll be doing that without any expansion. There won't be any addition or expansion or any structural change, just a very nice facelift and beautification of the building.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Zoning Subcommittee.
Calendar item number seven. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Frank Locata, 244 Vinton Street, Melrose, Mass., seeking permission from the Riviera City Council to modify an existing, to modify and extend a nonconforming four-family structure on Lot A1 at 200 Ocean Ave.
Proponents, Mr. Applicant, Counselor. Madam Clerk, just take this file. Did you get a letter from the site planner?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see it. Do you have a copy?
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Attorney Lawrence Simeoni, and I represent Frank Locata. He's also trustee of the Ocean Ave Realty Trust, the owner of the property at 200 Ocean Avenue. Seeks a special permit to modify a nonconforming structure in accordance with 1740 O30B. The applicant's proposed application before you consists of a plan of the locus in the building and architectural plans done by René Associates. I have Mr. René with me, and I'll let him explain exactly what is being proposed to the interior of the structure. The structure that many of yous are familiar with, it was built in 1920. It sits on 5,955,000, 55 square feet of land in the Osce District, has 113.45 in frontage. The building has four one-bedroom apartments. It fails to meet the setback requirements of the Osce, the Osce District. The Osce District has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, frontage of 100 feet. Its setback requirements are 20 feet in the front, 15 feet in the side, and 20 feet in the rear. This particular structure, as you can tell by the site plan established by Williams and Spargus, has literally no front, no frontage, I should strike that, no front yard, about 2 feet, and to the left-hand side of the structure is about 16 feet. Wherein the structure fails to meet the setback requirements of the Osce District, is a nonconforming structure in accordance with 1708530, and therefore, any modification of that structure, which substantially increases the present use of that structure, is subject to a special permit through your honorable body. It also is nonconforming because it only has four parking spaces, when in fact, in 1728010, your parking regulation requires it to have more. Essentially, the project, its goal is not to increase apartments, not to increase bedrooms, but rather to increase the design and the quality of the living space therein. There is a proposed 300-square-foot extension on the second floor. It's approximately 19 by 15. That is the only major exterior improvement being done, along with the, an expansion of the front deck and a spiral staircase. There'll be a small balcony on the second floor. Those are the only, and I would consider the minor exterior modifications. The interior modifications is really what this project is all about. It will address various, it will address various deficiencies in bedroom size and design, and I'm going to take this opportunity now to let Mr. René do what he does best, explain to you what's going on in the interior of this proposed structure.
My name is Ron Renary. I represent Renary Associates Architects, 135 Mass. Ave., Boston. As Mr. Simeoni said, there's four units currently in the building, and what we're doing is altering, I'm seeing if the, it's not up on the screen, but that's okay. We're altering the interior of the units and putting a small addition on. So on the first floor, there is no change at all. We're moving a column on the first floor. That's the only thing. There's a freestanding column holding a deck now. We're enlarging that deck on the second floor, and the column will move. On the second floor, there will be a larger deck, and there will be two bedrooms added over the existing, have a picture here? Over the existing deck. So as you probably saw in your packet, there is an existing deck here, and the existing deck is going to be enlarged, and then there's a one-story area here. This is an existing one-story area. So we're going to add a second floor onto that existing one-story area.
Ron, we're going to be going through this again, so if we don't have to go through this, all the motions at this point, the subcommittee will be meeting it, and then we're meeting on this again. So if we can try and make this a little quicker, I'd appreciate it. We understand what's going on, but we want to be able to put more detail into it at subcommittee and then be able to vote on it when we come out.
Okay, and that's our intent as well.
Thank you.
So on the, the second floor, we're adding two bedrooms, and on the third floor, there's an attic space which is accessed from the second floor unit. There's two units on the second floor, as you recall, and one of the units has access to the attic. So we're adding a dormer on the attic, or in the attic, so that there can be a bedroom up there. The second floor unit now uses a small sunroom for a bedroom, and that will become a sunroom again, and the attic area will be a bedroom. That's essentially what we're doing. It's a very small addition. And again, the footprint is not changing. There's four units. Four units, one bedroom each.
So at this point, Mr. President, we would ask, you should make note the fact that I did go to site plan for their regulatory review under the special permit criteria. They've issued a letter dated 16/2013, and asked that that be sent to the subcommittee, and this matter be sent to the Subcommittee on Zoning as well.
And we do have that, and it will be attached to the packet. Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Your proponent, sir? Stand up. You want to say your name, or just you want to speak, sir? Just name and address for the record if you wish. Push the button, push the button again. There you go.
I'm William Dolmier, live at 2 Saginaw Street, Riviera, Mass. I'm a member to that property that he's talking about, and right now, he has three to four parking spots, and you're going to double the thing up and make four, four units, where you're going to get eight to 10 cars. And he claims he's not going to put up anything on the outside other than porches.
Excuse me, Billy, are you a opponent or a proponent?
I'm against it.
You're against it. So we have, you jumped the gun on me, but that's okay. Say your piece. Say your piece. I don't want you to have to get up again. Push the button again.
Got it.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Oh, all right. Thanks. So I don't care what he does, but the way he's talking, of course, he's got to add on. Where's his package? And back in that building, they's the old man. I mean, I live, I own the house for 35 years next door to it. I'm not looking for him to be on top of my family because my daughter lives there, and I take care of them, and I want to see more action than what he's talking about. I called him up, no such, no such address where he lives. I called the boy up, and he don't bother to answer the phone. I don't think he has a phone. So I'm against it.
Thank you, sir. To make it official, are there any other proponents? Opponents? Are there any other opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Counselor Penta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question because I just want to make sure I understand this right. Right now, this building is being used as a four-family as we speak today, correct?
It's a four-family. It's been that way since 1920.
And after this?
There are four single one-bedroom lots.
You answered my question. Can I ask a question? You answer them?
Sure.
Thank you. The second question is this. Out of any of these units, the four units, any going to be more than a one-bedroom?
No.
Then you answered my question. That's, so you're just basically squaring off the home to make a bigger room, a bigger bedroom than a studio apartment. I just want to get it correct. I mean, I went over this, so I just want to, you're not adding any bedrooms. It's a four, it's a four-unit now. It's going to stay a four-one bedroom.
Correct.
Because he does have a legitimate thing if you're adding people coming in there with cars, but if not adding bedrooms, I'll bring the rest of the questions up at the committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Through you, Mr. President, to the ward councilmen. There'll be no increase of the footprint of the building. There'll be no number of increase in bedrooms. There will be no increase in units. And if the gentleman wants my telephone number, it's 1-781-286-1560. I'm in the book.
So noted. Thank you, sir. Any other counselors? Hearing and seeing none. Counselors, Counselor Powers, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the architect a question. If you'd come to the podium, please.
Counselor, we're going to be asking questions at the subcommittee.
No, this is, this is.
So make a one question, please.
So are you, let me ask you, are you increasing the square footage of that building?
On the second floor, yes.
By how much?
About 300 square feet.
300 square feet. And that is to add a bedroom?
Add two bedrooms.
Add two bedrooms. Okay.
Because it's two units on that floor.
So we are adding two bedrooms?
No. We're making bedrooms in the addition, but there's small spaces now that are substandard bedrooms.
So you're enlarging bedrooms. Is that correct?
We're enlarging bedrooms, basically.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Again, we will take the site plan review report and attach it to that C1306. And just a note that, you know, I did get a call from one of the neighbor on the other side of tracks. I did go over there, and, you know, I was hoping that you either had a local meeting with the residents to go over this and see what their concerns are, and to contact this person, because from where I, where I looked, you would be blocking their view of the sea, and they do have a concern about that. And so I think we ought to talk about that a little further and see what we can work out before the zoning subcommittee meeting. So with that, we will, zoning subcommittee on this public hearing.